Okay. Good evening, welcome to the November fifteenth Merrimack School Board meeting. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Now we are at the public participation portion of tonight's meeting. I'd like to welcome you. And I also just want to go through a few standard rules and guidelines. It was decided at a recent school board meeting that we would now allow residents to submit public comments via email. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomment@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. And just like, you know, in prior meetings, it's really an all or nothing thing. So if we don't feel we can read them all, we will not read them and just include them in the minutes for the meeting. I have a few ground rules. Please remember, we are all neighbors, the same community. Also, those of us on the board are your neighbors. Please be clear and concise. Whether you're in person or via the email, please keep your comments concise and be clear about what you're asking of the board. Please direct your comments to the board. We also just want to remind you that this is a business meeting. Please do not speak out of turn. Also be respectful in your comments, again remembering that we are all neighbors. When residents do come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, please state your first name only and mention that you are a student. There's no need for you to state your address. We have time allocated for public comments. At that time, we will move, once that time is up, we will move to the business portion of our meeting until we open up public comments at the end. And lastly, we will not allow any public disparagement of any of our district employees or school board members. We will also alternate, I'll open up the floor, and we do have some that have come through. So we'll start with the floor and then we'll just alternate as the next person's getting ready to speak at the microphone. So, any public comments tonight?
Disruptions, I'm really glad that, grateful that we've been able to stay in school this year and that she's having just a starkly different year this year. Just being in school has made all the difference. And to that note, with the numbers being what they are right now with COVID, I'm hoping that we can just maintain our mask policy, which seems to be, you know, keeping most of the kids in school. Maybe even doing some strengthening of protocols if that's called for. And check the numbers, they're about as bad as I've seen them since I can remember in quite a while. At least since January is what I read. And I think, other than that, you know, just reading up the other thing I wanted to mention. I was excited last meeting just to feel the energy behind people sort of uniting behind the welfare of the kids, you know, just thinking about them physically and emotionally and all the things that, you know, show that we, you know, care for the kids, but also help them to have a better learning environment and to be more successful. So I thought that was really neat to see. And that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
Thank you. So the first is from Joanne Grobecker, twenty-seven Craig Drive. My name is Joanne Grobecker, Grobecker, and I want to thank the district for the focus on literacy and handwriting as a way to address learning loss from a pandemic and strengthen skills for all kids. Thank you to every board member and member of administration for enabling our students to have a positive school year. Thank you to every teacher, therapist, and para for all you do to teach our children in a caring environment. I was pleased to see that the district website, sa26.org, now has a curriculum and assessment tab on the homepage. I was happy to see all the assessments given are listed in an organized and easy to read document. I applaud the district for putting in writing on this page that, note to parents, you may request copies of your child's assessments. STAR is a quick diagnostic assessment and does not have a parent report that can be printed. The transparency from administration is appreciated and helps parents be better partners in their child's education. I appreciate that the curriculum section of the website is beginning to be updated and a math curriculum has been posted. I look forward to seeing the reading and writing curriculums posted. The district is piloting a handwriting program in certain elementary school classes. I urge the district to implement a research-based handwriting program in all elementary schools. In two thousand nineteen, only thirty-eight percent of fourth graders in New Hampshire could read proficiently. Source nces.edu.gov nation's report card. Imagine what that number is after a pandemic. Master Cola is implementing a reading intervention for every single student in first and second grade using structured literacy programs. I am pleased to see these programs being used in all general education to benefit all students. All students have access to phonics and phonemic awareness programs at Master Cola. I would love for the district to adopt a uniform structured literacy program so all students can learn how to read. I am here for a strong public education system that benefits all kids. Thank you to teachers and therapists for all you do every day. Respectfully, Joanne Grobecker.
Thank you. Any other public comments out in the audience? Okay.
Ken Martin, Woodward Road. And thank you for your time and your energy and your patience and all the work you put into this district for our kids. I was also going to bring up all the great academic recovery programs that are taking place. I know my son has been benefiting from them. We've already noticed a huge difference in his reading just from September until now. It's been amazing to watch. And I think a huge part of that, I know a huge part of that goes to our administrators and our teachers. And with the budget planning process vastly, or quickly encompassing us, I hope we consider that and reward our hardworking teachers and administrators when looking, working with the Merrimack Teachers Association with their contract and encouraging to continue this kind of work and to make us a competitive district and a desirable district for other ideas and forward-thinking teachers and administrators like that. And just lastly, continuing to follow the advice of the Department of Health and Human Services with their recommendations on masking and all the protocols that have been in place, keep it up because it's working. So, thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Next from Lisa Mongovan, fourteen Lamson Drive. Could the school board please remind families and students to wear masks on buses? My students tell me they are rarely worn. I know drivers must pay attention to driving over masking, but I have seen my partially vaccinated children get on the buses in the morning and end up sitting next to or near fully unmasked children. Thank you, Lisa Mongovan.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, forty-five Springfield Circle. I just wanted to address you tonight to talk to you about the mask policy. I specifically wanted to talk about the current presence of the parental opt-out that we currently are still under. Before the school year, we all met. Board member Barnes, I remember you supported the meeting, and forgive if I'm paraphrasing, but saying that it was a compromise and it would show the willingness of the board to hear the community and to compromise with them. And I respect that. I believe that the school board, this school board, the members of this board and school boards all around the country have been placed in an impossible situation. You have all been faced with heated opposition, not always respectful. I believe we've been fairly lucky in our community. We have a great community. Other districts we have seen have not been so lucky. But I also remember at that time when board member Peters had brought up the motion and it had gained its support, that she addressed the room and let the members of the community who were there that night know that this could change on a dime, that we need to watch the numbers. And I really believe that that time has come. I was really shocked to look at the numbers when I pulled up Merrimack Schools COVID-19 numbers and saw, I think it was November twelfth, to see that there were two hundred and five COVID-related absences. Last week, it was a hundred and sixty. There were four active staff positive cases. Looking at the New Hampshire COVID site, I wanted to look at Nashua, who's been under a mask mandate for the whole year. Their current, as of eleven fifteen, total onsite active cases was six. For Merrimack, total onsite active cases was fifteen, more than double in a district that's much smaller. In Nashua, current onsite clusters, two, in Merrimack, six. Current onsite outbreaks in Nashua, zero, in Merrimack, we have two. I know that our goal is to keep our children in school. We have a challenge with substitutes. We are reaching out to the community. I am filling out my application, am in process, so I can do my part to try to help. But our numbers are climbing. And even the World Health Organization, who has been touted here many times for their facts, the Regional Director for Europe, Dr. Hans Klug, if I mangled his name, I apologize, but stated that hospitalizations in Europe have doubled over the past four weeks. We need to keep pressure on the virus, not surrendering on masks, the handwashing, indoor ventilation, particularly in schools. Masks are not a hundred percent, but the medical community has been using them for years to mitigate, not eliminate, but mitigate the spread of disease. And there are challenges with masks. I completely understand that. As a parent of a child in the Merrimack School District, I help my daughter navigate the challenges of overcoming obstacles like seeing expressions and trying to read eyes. And we've kind of done some activities, trying to see, do you think I'm smiling? Do you think I'm frowning? And there are children that I believe there should be exceptions for, whether it's a disability, whether it's a special need, a sensory issue, that with their doctor and with those professionals, if those children would be more negatively impacted by wearing a mask and that that detriment to that child outweighs the risk that it poses to the rest of the children in the classroom, I would fully support and expect that we would all do what that child needs. But I think the time has come to say, we are a community, we get through this together. We can't opt out of that. And we want to keep our kids in school. And we need to respect the safety of our children and the safety of the staff members and make the hard choice to do this and then reexamine the numbers as I believe is a very thoughtful approach because they can change. I truly hope they improve and that we can get rid of these. They're not fun. I know. World Health Organization has on their website that while extended mask-wearing may be uncomfortable, it is not harmful. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration and working to keep our schools open safely.
Thank you. Shannon?
Next is from Jennifer McInnis of eight Evergreen Drive. First, I want to express my appreciation for the hard work and dedication of all the staff, faculty, administrators, and school board members in these difficult times. I support the mask mandate in its current form with community transmission and percent positivity rates of testing as high as they are. CDC research shows that schools with mask mandates are less likely to have clusters of outbreaks. And our own neighbor district Bedford, SAU twenty-five, had a dramatic decrease in cases in the high school when the mask mandate was placed due to high cases. Thank you for your time, Jennifer McInnis.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll check back one more time before we move into session. I know we have a couple more that are emails.
Yes, you do. And by the way, I'm just going to say before we keep going, a couple of things. There were a number of people that sent emails without addresses. I did email you back requesting those addresses. If you are watching the meeting and can respond back, I can get them before tonight ends or even if you do it now while we're sitting at the table. And then the other thing, I think Lori Peters is excused from tonight's meeting, I didn't hear you say it.
Thank you. That is correct. That's a good housekeeping item.
I forgot all the time when I was chair, so I don't forget it.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem. So, to the members of the Merrimack School Board, I am writing to express my concern over the exponentially growing COVID numbers within the schools. As of Friday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, there were fifty-one active cases, fifty-one. I wanted to do a comparison of districts nearby to see how our numbers compared. While very unsurprisingly, the districts with a mask mandate had a much lower percentage of active cases. I know that Merrimack likes to claim that we have a mask mandate, but we simply do not. There is an opt-out choice making it not mandated. Please excuse me if the current student enrollment for the districts below is off a bit. While looking for this data, I found slightly varying numbers, but were all in the same ballpark and all numbers came from the same source. The active COVID numbers are accurate as they came directly from each school's COVID dashboards. As of November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, no mask mandate or opt-out. Merrimack, fifty-one active cases out of approximately three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five students. Bedford, fifty-six active cases out of approximately four thousand four hundred and thirty-seven students. Mask mandates. Nashua, forty active cases out of approximately eleven thousand seventy-two students. Manchester, one hundred nine cases out of approximately thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five students. This data shows that Nashua, a district nearly three times as large as Merrimack, has less cases. And Manchester, almost four times as large as us, has just over twice the number of cases. These numbers speak for themselves. I believe the school board has done their best to try to find a middle ground to appease parents both in favor and against masks, which seemed logical back in September when numbers were much lower. It is no longer logical. It is time to reconsider Merrimack's current mitigation strategies, especially the mask policy. The school board always said they would revisit the mask mandate regularly and make changes as needed based on numbers. Clearly, now is the time. Numbers have never been this high in schools and they are increasing exponentially. Our current practice is not working. I have listened to multiple meetings of parents discussing mental health due to masks. Wearing masks does not negatively impact mental health. It is the isolation that does. More and more students are being isolated at home due to COVID. This is what is impacting them. Missing out on crucial instructional time and time with peers is unhealthy. Wearing masks will help bring the numbers back down and bring students back to the classroom. I teach in the district in Massachusetts, which has, as all mass schools have through, at least the end of January, a mask mandate. I have never once heard a child in my class complain to me about wearing their mask and I teach six and seven-year-olds. The parents don't complain either. They respect the policy. Do you know how many active cases we have right now in my district? One. Yes, one. We have, we only have five hundred ninety-seven students in the school, which makes Merrimack about six times larger. One to fifty-one where Merrimack is six times larger, again, it doesn't add up. With vaccines now available for ages five to eleven, many students are getting vaccinated. Hopefully, the numbers will start coming back down and a mask mandate will no longer be necessary. But until then, please revisit your policy. No one is asking for a permanent change. We are just asking for logical changes when needed based on current numbers. Let's do all we can to help children, keep children safe and in schools where they belong. Thank you. Beth Grady, fifteen Parker Drive. And there's more. From Angelique Lipman at eight Owls Court, Merrimack. Hello, I am writing to ask you to keep the mask mandate and remove the opt-out option for masks in December. While I am aware of some classes only have a few opting out, there are several who have half the class opting out. I have been made aware of that in some of these rooms with high opt-out rates, there is an increase in COVID spread and quarantines. As of today, fifty-one students in Merrimack are positive for COVID. Another fifty-one are out quarantining and sixty-nine students are excluded awaiting testing. A total of a hundred seventy-one students are not in school in Merrimack, according to the COVID dashboard. I have been told that since Merrimack is not live-streaming to these students who are at home, as they are in Manchester, these students are not receiving any direct instruction and are missing out on a lot of school. Especially worrisome are those siblings of positive cases where they have to quarantine twenty days while their COVID-positive sibling only misses ten days of school. I personally know several people who have the situation going on in Merrimack. I teach in Manchester and even as a large city, our positivity rate is far less. The same is true with Nashua. In both of these larger communities, schools are showing less COVID spread within these classrooms. The reason for this is clear. They have mandatory masking with no choice to opt out. In Manchester, we also have a weekly voluntary pool testing for students and staff and rapid tests available at all times at each school for students and staff. As a teacher who goes from class to class in my position, I see hundreds of students a day in their classrooms and the masks are working and not one child has ever complained to me about wearing them. They're happy to be in school and seeing them in person in school every day is so important as we are playing catch-up to fill in the gaps of what the past two years of interrupted schooling has done. We are in school every day and learning and masks do not get in the way of that learning at all. I am so grateful to see Merrimack students going on field trips again and having a somewhat normal year again with the help of masks to keep them there. However, several people I know have missed out on these field trips due to quarantining. As we are seeing these increasing numbers in Merrimack schools and not in Manchester and Nashua schools, it is clear that their mask policy is working better than ours. They have no opt-out option where germs spread are in the classrooms. Please, as we approach winter, let's keep our kids in school and keep the mask mandate and take away the opt-out option. Otherwise, the numbers will keep rising and more of our kids will be home quarantining, missing out on instruction, field trips, and more, which will certainly impact their mental health. Thank you, Angelique Lipman. Next is, let's see if I have the address on this one. I do. So, Jennifer Jobin, Mary Meeting Drive. Good evening. Thank you to all faculty, staff, administrators, and board members of the Merrimack School District for your continued hard work this school year. It is greatly appreciated. As a parent of a student in Merrimack Schools, I am writing to ask members of the school board to continue to rely on data and science for your decisions regarding mask use. According to the district's COVID dashboard, as of Friday, November twelfth, there were fifty-one students who were positive for COVID-19. This number is the highest it has been this school year. As people gather for the upcoming Thanksgiving and winter holidays, it is possible for the increase in cases may continue. I request that you continue the current mask policy and consider temporarily changing the policy to include mandated masks for all students and staff until cases decline to an acceptable number. My number one concern is to have schools remain open so that my child and all Merrimack students may continue to attend in person. Like all parents, I look forward to the day when I can safely send my student to school without a mask. Unfortunately, with positivity rates as high as they currently are, this is not the time to make that change. Sincerely, Jennifer Jobin. Back to the next one. Make sure I have this right. This one does have a response, I think. Nope, never mind. Bear with me. The next is from Lori Spillane of eighteen Windsor Drive. And, dear school board, I am writing to you today to plead with everything I have to reinstate the mask mandate. My youngest is in first grade at MES. We have been over vigilant, doing absolutely, we've been over vigilant, doing absolutely everything we can to keep her safe during this pandemic. She has severe asthma, which means she often ends up getting pneumonia from the common cold. She has been hospitalized five times in her six years of life and in addition, has had three bouts of pneumonia. Thursday and Friday, November fifth and sixth, she was exposed to COVID by a child whose parents opted him out of the mask rule. We were notified Monday, November ninth. We woke up Tuesday, November tenth, and tested her as a precaution. Her test was positive before the control line even had a chance to process. Since that day, we have had to tele-visit with her pulmonologist in Boston at Mass General Children's Hospital, who immediately put her on oral steroids Wednesday night. By Thursday midday, she was gasping for air. I was forced to give her a second dose of steroids early in addition to a double dose of her rescue inhaler to prevent an ER visit. Meanwhile, both my daughters are on IEPs. Neither have been given the opportunity to remote learn or Zoom in their services without my requesting at first. Because of this, my older daughter, who is on the autism spectrum, is forced to quarantine for twenty days. Twenty days with no schooling, twenty days with no services. This is unbelievably unacceptable. The fact that you have allowed yourselves to be bullied into a mask opt-out despite your, that your first priority is the safety and health of our children. I'm baffled and frankly angry beyond belief that we are faced with this situation. Honestly, I blame those of you who voted for the opt-out. I blame you for my child's struggle to breathe, her need for expensive prescription steroids, her need to be monitored twenty-four-seven. Something has got to be done. Children and teachers' health needs are, uh, needs, children, sorry. Children's and teachers' health needs to be first priority above and beyond someone who wants to flex their rights to expose others just to prove a point. You must, you do the right thing. What you know you should. You must keep these children and staff safe, please. Lori Spillane. Next is from Brian Townsend, five Mary Meeting Drive. I am writing to urge you to impose a mandatory mask policy. Prior to the start of the school year, a vocal minority of parents urged the board to allow for an opt-out. Their primary argument was that the risk of spread amongst children was low. In just a few months since this board chose to allow for opt-outs, COVID-19 cases in our schools have exploded. At the three elementary schools alone, there are currently sixty-one active cases, all but three of which are students. At last check, there are currently a hundred and twenty-five total active cases in Merrimack, meaning that half of the total cases in Merrimack are our elementary school students. Our own son's classroom currently has three active cases. There is no question that the number of COVID-19 cases in our schools dwarfs those from last year when this board instituted a mandatory mask policy. To say this is a coincidence ignores all facts and logic. We are in the home stretch. Our elementary students now have the opportunity to begin the vaccination process if their families choose to do so. I would urge the board to reinstate the mandatory mask policy so we may get through the winter safely without adding to the clusters in our classrooms. Kind regards, Brian Townsend. Next, and this is, I haven't checked to see if, I do not have an address on this one. I will be emailing this one to request an address. And then, from Kathy Kamara, Belmont Drive. Let the parents worry about our own children and you worry about yours, masks don't work. Let me see if I have everything, other than the one that does not have an address that just came through. I think we're caught up for now.
Any other comments? I have time for one more.
Naomi Halter, ten Everest Drive. I'm just going to throw my support behind all the folks who would like mandatory masking. I think that's very reasonable at this point, given the levels of transmission that we're currently seeing in our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to the next portion. I'll close public participation and recognitions. Do we have recognitions this evening? Okay. Item number four, the informational updates, the superintendent update.
Yes, thank you. Good evening and good evening, everyone. We have finished with our budget meetings with the staff of each school building. We have now been around to all schools, engaging the staff in conversations about what's working well in the school system from an academic and social-emotional perspective with our children and what might their suggestions be for improving our school system that might be reflected in the appropriation request for the twenty-two, twenty-three school department budget. So we appreciate all that input this week, beginning tomorrow. Matt and Kim and I will be meeting with the elementary principals, the middle school principals, the high school administration, and Student Services Administration with specific budget discussions. And so those will take place so they construct the budget and present it to you on December sixth. I want to congratulate certainly the Merrimack High School Interact Club. I want to just take a moment to tell you some of the activities that they've been involved with. On October twenty-eighth, there were twenty-two student volunteers who volunteered their time at the Fall Fest at Reed's Ferry and students helped with run the games for the participants and they had a wonderful time. On October thirtieth, the students participated with the Merrimack Rotary Club in assisting with an electronics recycling fundraiser. There were eight students who participated and were very actively involved in that recycling fundraiser effort. On Monday, we had seventeen high school students who helped pick up trash along the faculty and student parking lot and they actually filled nine trash bags. And their next project will be participation in the annual Turkey Trot, organizing the Giving Tree and partnering with the Merrimack Food Pantry at the Saint James Methodist Church to collect donations. So, great students doing wonderful things, not only for the student body, but for the community as a whole, and we congratulate them. Also want to say that Also want to say that, um, well, this is the last meeting we have before Thanksgiving. So I want to wish all of you and our staff, our students and their families a very happy Thanksgiving. And that is it for my update for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, um, next up is the assistant, and Kim is not here. Um, she's also excused. So we will move to the Assistant Superintendent for Business, Matt.
Well, I can do a little bit of Kim Yarlot. Here, let me use that plate. I just want to say that I am really excited about the presentation of the K through six standards-based report card and the people here this evening. Uh, we have been working behind the scenes, they probably don't even know this, to get that report card and all the standards that are being created into Power School for next school year. So it'll be available there. And, um, I've just applaud them for getting this. I know it's been a long journey and we're looking forward to the completion of that. And, um, boy, I'll tell you, it's gonna be exciting. Once we can get those things automated and in Power School, I'm gonna be very happy for that as well as a lot of parents and teachers and whoever else. So that's my Kim, sorry, Kim, thank you. Now I'll go to me. Gotta put my grumpy face on. When I did Kim, I had to smile, right? When I do me, I have to be my grumpy self, right? She tells me that every morning. So anyway. I just wanna mention that, um, tomorrow night, I will be in the company of the esteemed Mr. Mower, Chairman of the Budget Committee, who just happens to be sitting here to my immediate left to do the year end review, uh, with the Budget Committee, uh, to aid Pat Heinrich in doing a training for the Budget Committee. And to also present what we're gonna be going over tonight as far as the initial run of the capital improvement plan to give them. I always do, I always like to do this. We talk about what happened last year, explain how it happened. And then we give them a little peek into the future for, to get their budget hats on for twenty-two, twenty-three with the, with the capital improvement program. So that will be tomorrow night at seven at the Merrimack High School Cafeteria. Correct, Mr. Mower? Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Um, I have, um, I'll be giving a budget message later, so I don't have anything additional. So I will go ahead and I'll have more, um, at our next meeting. And then next is the student representative.
The only update I have is that fall sports recently ended, so we're currently looking forward to hopefully a good winter sports season. So that's it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now for old business, the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Yes, the Health and Safety Task Force will be convening within the next several days. Because we want to provide you with an update, a formal update at our very next meeting. I am concerned, as some have expressed about the increasing COVID numbers in the, in the school system. Um, I want to encourage those who might have a willingness to have their children vaccinated, to please do so. Uh, that has been shown to be an effective mitigating strategy, uh, in preventing the, the growth and transmission of the, of the virus. Uh, I'm working with, um, Health Director Erin Olson, no relation, from the town, to see if we might be able to establish a clinic in Merrimack for, for children, uh, vaccination clinic. The numbers that have been cited either personally here tonight or in, in emails are correct. Uh, as of the twelfth, we had fifty-one cases. That is up significantly. Um, about a month to a month and a half ago, we were down to seven cases in the school system. Interestingly, many of those cases are at the elementary level. At the Master Cola Elementary School, Michelle and I have, have talked, uh, about some mitigating strategies. And at Thornton's Ferry, I have the larger numbers. The, in fact, greater numbers than the high school or the, or the middle school. The state data, to put this in perspective also. The rate of new cases in Merrimack per hundred thousand population over a fourteen-day period is now six hundred and sixty-five. That is two to three times what it was about a month and a half to two months ago. The test positivity rate, the antigen and PCR test positivity rate, which is also one of the indices used by the Department of Health and Human Services in the state to gauge whether it's mild, moderate, or substantial transmission. That positivity rate in Merrimack is now sixteen point four percent. Now, the benchmark for the state, for the DPHHS, uh, in terms of substantial transmission is five percent. We are at sixteen point four percent, which is about three to four times what it was about a month to a month and a half ago. Uh, the new cases in the last fourteen days is now up to one hundred and seventy-six. So ironically, at the last meeting and two meetings ago, I was beginning to see a downward trend in the numbers. That has changed. It's changed dramatically. So I'm gonna ask the members of the community to continue to do your part to try and, um, avoid contact if you know of someone who is positive in terms of the possessing the virus. Be careful in terms of hygiene, washing hands, perhaps mask wearing as much as you can. All of the mitigating strategies that are important to reduce the incidence of transmission of this virus. The significance is, is enhanced by the fact that we are now entering the cold months, the heating months of the season where the windows are not as open in our homes or in our schools as they were during the spring and the summer and earlier part of the fall. That airflow is a very important mitigating strategy to dissipate in the moisture droplets. Well, as windows are closed, heating systems are, come on, um, you know, the, the likelihood of that droplet transmission in, increases. And so, uh, encouraging everyone to be as, as cautious as possible. And we will be meeting, as I said, with the Health and Safety Task Committee. I will make a recommendation to you on whether we continue the current strategy or whether I recommend something different in terms of masking policy and other mitigating strategies. I know Michelle and I have talked about the number of cases at Master Cola and going back to having desks aligned in the same direction as many school systems did last year. As opposed to desks facing each other with children facing each other. So there are, are strategies that we can adopt in addition to masking, but masking and vaccination are the most important too. And so we will be making that recommendation to you for either continuing or enhancing the mask policy at the next meeting. And I will let you know in advance what our recommendation will be so we can have that discussion. And that is all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, uh, you might have. But, um, I'm just corroborating what, what has been presented.
Uh, Shannon.
Uh, the only concern I have with the report tonight, Bill, is the fact that we're gonna be meeting ten days after Thanksgiving. And when we talk about gatherings and large concentration, because we know Black Friday flyers are flying in my mailbox right now. And by mailbox, I mean by email, because I don't get mail anymore, really. But that said, I'm concerned that we're meeting ten days after all those potential exposures are gonna happen and that we didn't have a recommendation prior to the holiday. So I think that's, that's the concern I have right now is that we don't have anything to go off of until we're gonna be ten days into, uh, into probably a most intensive, um, potential exposure. So I don't know how the board feels. I'm one, one voice here. But as we go to revisit that, I don't know that we want to wait ten days after the holiday to have this conversation. Um, I know we've had emergency board meetings. I, I mean, I was hoping we wouldn't have to, but this is something I'm not sure we want to wait ten days to do.
I will be prepared to discuss this with you at, at any time. If you wish to have a, a public meeting to discuss this, um, as soon as possible. Right after we meet with the Health and Safety Committee, I'll, I'll be prepared, certainly.
Jenna.
So, so my question is, I mean, we have the data in front of us. We have fifty-one cases. Most of them are at the elementary level. Our tests, or the percentage is sixteen point four percent. And this is the, this is the meeting, this is the last of the month meeting where we said we would revisit. So my, I don't want to be disrespectful to the Health and Safety Committee, but I wonder if we should be making, uh, uh, a change now. My, my, my thinking is, and I won't phrase it as a motion at this point. If our issues are at the elementary level, can we rescind the opt out option for just the elementary level and leave it standing at the middle and high school level?
If, uh, my recommendation, and, and I will make a recommendation tonight if, if you would like one, and that is, now I, I must apologize. My error was that I thought we had a meeting on November thirtieth, our next school board meeting. And if that's incorrect, uh, I apologize.
Yeah, it's the first and third, so we won't meet again until December sixth.
Because my recommendation, uh, tonight, independent of the Health and Safety Task Committee, and this is what I was, will be recommending, is we go to mandatory masking. And I, at all grade levels. Uh, keeping in mind that, uh, whether it's, if we had it only at the elementary level, still a lot of homes have children who are in the middle school or high school who could bring that, the virus home. So that, my feeling is of, to provide you with a recommendation, I will not be shy about making that recommendation. So I would recommend that we go to a mandatory masking, uh, policy.
Shannon.
Uh, that's nice, but we didn't post it. So it should have been the school board's consideration of, and we don't have that posted, which means we'd be doing something not transparently. So again, you, you give updates every time. We don't vote every time. Um, so us taking a position on that without posting it properly, I think would be inconsistent with what this board has done to, to, um, serve the public. But, uh, I understand, you know, we, you know, the misunderstanding, but again, that's something we did not post as an agenda item.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with that a little bit because I think we've set the stage that we would be making recommendations before each month under the Health and Safety Task Force, um, item. And so that's been the understanding the public has had, the way that I understand it. And so it's clearly, um, I've even seen, you know, online where people were expecting a decision tonight for December um, because it's under the Health and Safety and that's the precedent that we've sent, set as a board. That's just my take on it, though. Jenna?
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I, we told everybody at the last board meeting of every month, we would reevaluate. This is the last board meeting of this month and that I fully expected that what they meant by the Health and Safety Task Force update was a masking recommendation and then we would either continue what we were doing or change it. That's what we've done every month so far.
And I would just say that we haven't voted on it every month. So for that reason, I would say that we need to be more transparent in, in our posting of the agenda. That when the board, because you're saying we make a recommendation, yes, that's happening right now. We're doing that. But what we're not doing is taking a formal position. That should be posted. That's a vote. And a vote should be posted as what we're going to do about your recommendations. That's not on the agenda.
Well, in September, we voted and in October, we just said, okay.
It didn't change our, the vote.
We didn't change anything.
We didn't vote, but we didn't vote in October. We did vote in September and it was, so, and it was posted as part of the agenda. So I think that we, you know, I, I think consistency is appropriate. Um, I am, you know, definitely understanding, you know, your position and I, I would lean in toward that. But I just don't want to do something where, um, we take a vote and we haven't been, you know, transparent in our intent to do so.
Well, I mean, one, one item, one thing we could consider, let me throw something out there, which is giving administration some discretion um, where there's hotspots, you know. Certainly in areas where what I wouldn't want is administrations hand to be, hands to be tied where we need to make accommodations in certain classrooms or at a certain school where it spiked. You know, one option is to tonight allow at least, um, that type of, 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 you know, a control um, on an, on an as needed basis. And then we could post a public meeting before December. I mean, I can, we can do it a couple of different ways. So just, just throwing out a thought.
Yeah, I understand Cindy's, I mean, Cindy, uh, Lord, uh, good Lord. What's your name? Shannon.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry, it's been a long Monday. Shannon's point about consistency, but we haven't even been consistent up to this point. In August, we took a vote. In September, we took a vote. Last month, we just went, okay, keep doing what you're doing. Right? So every month on this Health and Safety Task Force update, we've done something different and we've done it based on what the situation is. So I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to pull one over on anybody. I'm trying to react to the reality that's, that we're presented with based on the recommendation, based on the timing of this meeting and what we said we were gonna do all along. That's, that's my motivation, just to be clear.
And I, I understand, completely understand the issue of transparency because that's, that's extraordinarily important for any public entity. I guess my feeling is the data is the data. If we had a hundred people here arguing against masking or a hundred people here arguing for masking, that wouldn't influence my decision. My decision is based on what I'm seeing happening in terms of the incidence and transmission, the rate of positivity, test positivity that from the state and the number of new cases per hundred thousand over the last fourteen days. All of that is trending upward and trending upward rapidly. And so, uh, my decision to you is, is based on that data and I think is on sound, uh, sound footing.
A third option?
Okay.
A third option is to post for an emergency meeting with just that one thing on it in two days or whatever, which is like as soon as possible. That's a third option.
I think I'd prefer that.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'd like it handled before Thanksgiving.
I mean, I, I mean, at the end of the day, I really, if you think there's even the possibility of perception of not being transparent, we can post a meeting at any time. And we can, you know, one or two days. In the meantime, though, I would still like to give administration some leeway so that their hands aren't tied. You know, if you've got a class where there's been a lot of exposure, that one class, there should be discretion to allow mask mandates for that class even in the next couple of days. And I think that's an unintended consequence that we hadn't considered originally. And I think we were really hopeful that we would continue to see a decline or we would see some improvement. But I also don't think that we should not have that not be allowed as a measure where there's some hotspots. But I can work with the board to get an emergency meeting scheduled over the next few days. And then, um, I'd like to hear your thoughts on, um, giving administration some leeway, even if we need a temporary, just a motion for some temporary mitigation efforts around masking where there's outbreaks.
Are you looking for a motion?
Um, if someone wants to make one.
Sure. Uh, I move that we, um, give the administration the latitude, oh, sorry. I, uh, move that we give the administration latitude to, um, institute, how do you wanna say this, spot mask mandates where necessary due to COVID-19 spread.
And up until our next meeting.
Up until our next meeting.
Any, do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, all right. Um, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Lori?
So again, I think, um, if we're gonna do this, I think it's gonna really be important that, um, we let parents know because this would be a blinker before the turn. If we're gonna make a change, then I think we really need to be transparent and everyone would need to know. So, um, that's what I would say.
And that transparency, I think, will be covered in a couple of days as soon as we can get back together to reconvene. And any other comments to the motion?
I was just gonna say, and, and, and I, I assume that since we're going to meet in just a couple of days, the only inaction of this motion would be because it was really necessary in a certain spot. You're not gonna go, well, there's a class with two, one kid or I don't even know kids and you're gonna make them have an, no, it's gonna be where it's needed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two, so it's two, two, the motion fails. Okay, anything else?
No, nothing else, other than I would encourage parents to consider vaccine for the children, because that is a major mitigating strategy.
I also wanted to thank you for, you kind of answered a question regarding the vaccination clinic. And I think that that's a great idea. I was going to ask about that anyways. And with the idea that, you know, particularly for the younger kids, being able to have a vaccination option that's in a building that they're familiar with, I think, you know, would be helpful as well, if that's the option that, that family chooses.
Yes, I'll keep you informed on, on that.
Oh, Jenna?
Just before we move on, in, in the future, for the second board meeting of every month, can we change that, that, so that this doesn't happen again? Can we change it to say Health and Safety Task Force Update Mask Policy Review? So specifically, that is on there so that every time at the end of the month when we said we were going to specifically review the mask policy, if we can change the agenda item to be that, then we have the latitude. Because emergency meetings are hard, right? Like, I can't even think of a night I'm available in the next three nights, so I'm going to have, you know, I'm not the only one. I'm, we're all going to have to. So it would be easier to have this on the agenda that way at the last meeting of every month, which I know there was some question about that, you know. That way, going forward, we have the ability to make those decisions without the transparency issue.
Shannon?
I would even call it Board's Response to Health and Task, Safety Task Force Update. So that way, we would have Board's Response, and the Response is, is a vote, and that way, they know that we are planning to address and make those decisions that night.
Okay. All right, the next item is the School Board's 2022-2023 Budget Message to Administration. I have reviewed the budget messages that I've seen, and I am going to just, I consolidated everyone, so I'm going to go ahead and read what I have. And then you're welcome to read your individual one if you'd like. And then, or, or comment to the message that I'm, I've consolidated. In reviewing the Board members' budget priorities for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, there are several themes and key items for consideration in developing the budget. As we all know, the world, our community, and our district have faced many challenges over the last couple of years. We'd appreciate keeping the budget as close to level-funded as possible, as we know many people in our community have been affected financially in these last couple of years. Budgeting that supports our students and their learning always should be top priority. We should continue to look for ways to improve the educational product that we deliver. Please note the following themes and areas of focus. One, social-emotional learning. We've made this a focus in recent years and garnered respect from others in the state. Especially given what we know about the current state of social-emotional health, we should continue to support and develop associated systems for students and staff. Competitive pay and benefits. This needs to be evaluated for district staff, including teacher subs, administration, and staff, to make sure we are competitive in our geographical area. We want to continue to focus on recruiting the best and brightest for our district and need to make sure we are competitive with our offerings. We should also consider the value of bringing on additional floater subs on a full-time basis, as we've previously done. We should also be mindful of teacher and student ratios as well. Graduation rates and student support. We need to develop and improve systems to raise our graduation rates and to support student success. For example, in addition to proactive focus during the school year, we should also have a plan for summer programming to fill all learning gaps, particularly at critical grade levels like four and seven. Technology. We should continue to focus and maintain the one-to-one device. We will need the one-to-one device ratio. We will need to budget for replacement in associated equipment and also evaluate any technology that we use to ensure that it's the most appropriate for current times and that we are getting the full value from these investments. Capital Improvement Plan. We should continue to focus on these projects to ensure that we maintain our facilities and avoid that phrase we all know well, kicking the can, or we're, we're familiar with wanting to avoid on important items. The CIP is laid out so that we can help keep the tax rate stable so that we are proactive and not reactive to our facility needs. Also, as it relates to facilities, ventilation. This is important to continue on the path of improving ventilation so that our learners and staff are able to work in a healthy environment. Cleaning. We need to incorporate some of the COVID-19 standards of cleaning and sanitization as the new standard to minimize overall student illness. We'd also appreciate as much information and budget line items as reasonably possible. We'd like to thank you, the District Administration, and District Employees in advance for the work you will all put into this and have already put into this important and valuable process. Thank you. On board, Lori?
So I just want to expand on a few things. Again, the graduation rates. I'm hoping that we can increase interventions during the school year to be responsible for the needs of all students. Look at more summer programming for all learners that are not proficient in reading and math, not just students who have a 504 or an IEP. Again, a summer program, Exploring Science for a Week for all students who would like to gain more knowledge and critical thinking. Also, I think it's, my number one focus this year would be, I think our teachers are our most valuable asset, and I can't stress enough the importance of retention in understanding the value of a highly qualified teacher. And I just think that when we look at our, our top goals and priority, I think our teachers are, are our number one priority. And then finally, I had the pleasure of going to the Planning and Building Committee meeting last week, and it was stressed at that meeting that we really need to think about having a capital improvement plan. We need to put money back into our capital improvement. We've currently expended all of our money, and so there's no rainy day fund out there. So I think the school board should consider a warrant article to present to the voters to reserve money. So we, there is money due to COVID-19 pandemic, and I think we need to start looking at, at our long-term planning, our master plan, and having a solid capital improvement investment plan.
Thank you, Lori. Any other messages from the other board members?
I think you captured the ones that I covered in mine, so.
Okay. Jenna?
Mine are, you summarized mine. I just want to be a little bit more specific about a couple of things. I've already talked to Kim. I know you guys are considering a change in educational screeners, especially for like elementary school level. I'm hoping that when we choose an, a new screener, whether we stick with what we have or whenever we choose one, that it, it has a component that's built in for targeted interventions, especially at the elementary level, something like iReady. I know that may increase cost, but when I see the impact of iReady in the district where I work, it's undeniable. The way that it targets individual gaps for individual kids, gives them individual mitigation strategies, it's huge. I'm not saying we have to choose that one. I'm just saying, as we are budgeting for a new screener or to continue with certain screeners, that we, we choose something that has a component that's built in for targeted interventions. I would like to see us expand our building-level SEL resources sooner than later. The partnership with Greater Nashua Mental Health is awesome. Some of those two-to-three-year goals, I think, I would love to see some of those moved up. It can certainly be done by grant funding, things like Project Aware and other things. The need is so great. I see it every day where I am in the elementary school. I can only imagine it's exponentially worse at the middle and high school level. So to whatever degree we can move that ahead sooner than later, I would love us to consider that. And I just want to echo what Lori said, that retention and understanding the value of highly qualified teachers and paying our teachers what it's, what they are worth. Obviously, that is part of the collective bargaining agreement. But I would love for that to be a priority for Meramec teachers' pay to be competitive for retention and attraction of the absolute best teachers.
Any other comments?
Thank you for that input, that excellent input.
Okay, we can go ahead and move on then to new business. Yeah, new business, which is the Capital Improvement Plan Review. Matt Chevonnell?
Thank you very much. You have in front of you and posted online the 10-year capital expenditure summary form of the CIP for 2022-23 to 2031-32. You can see that we have, I'll just go through the items. This is something you need to kind of absorb a little bit and see where you think things should be, but this is our best guess. And right now, and it's kind of an informed decision as far as the roofing that you see right there. The first item is indeed roofing. Prices have gone up around $10 a square foot from what they were last year. And when you're talking a section of roof, which is Thornton's Ferry Elementary School, the date that, that, you know, was done in the seventies and the warranty has expired, and there was another layer put on top of it to, to get it through. You're looking at around 40,000 square feet, so you're looking at $40 a square. You're looking at $1.6 million. That section of Thornton's Ferry Elementary School is on the map that you have on the second page. It is in, I'm not, I'm a little bit colorblind. I'm not sure what color that is. It could be blue, it could be teal, it could be, it's different than the rest. And it's most of the school, okay? So that's how I'll quantify it. And what this is, this is, you know, sections D, C, F, G, and H. They were constructed in '94 and been out of warranty since 2009. These sections, what was done in '94 wasn't stripped off. So these sections were, had a built-up roof on tar and gravel on top of the original 1970 roof. We did a walkthrough with Tom and our roofing consultant, who's an independent business who does this for a living, state of New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New England, not associated with any type of product of roof or anything like that. And they took a look at that section, and they were there in the morning when there was kind of dew on the roof, and they noticed there were particular sections where the frost had melted immediately adjacent to unmelted areas, indicating that the insulation in the melted areas was likely saturated from leakage at the surface. So once insulation gets damp, it loses its capacity to provide an R-value of insulation. So hence, the item, the area that was not, that was frost-free, obviously was losing heat. So it was obviously probably damp insulation. So that's basically what we're talking about. We haven't done a roof in a number of years. Could be three, could be four years, we haven't done a roof. So now, I believe that this is probably something that we need to take a really close look at and make a priority for perhaps, there's no room in the operating budget to put this. We'd be well over the default budget, everybody knows that. So potentially, that could be something that the board can, could consider, couldn't consider for a warrant article, for a presentation at deliberative session, et cetera, et cetera. It's definitely not something that's a want at this point, because we haven't touched roofs in quite a number of years. I, I think it's, it's a need. We've also gone through the, the rest of the roofing schedule. These can change depending upon the yearly, the twice-a-year inspection we do of the roofs that Tom does with our roofing consultant, too. But this is how it plays out till 2930. And that's just the, the schedule of the roofing projects that we're looking at in the next few years. It doesn't, it doesn't let up as we've just kind of moved things out. It's just shifted from year to year. And now we're in a situation where we believe, you know, Thornton's Ferry is going to be the one that we have to tackle in 2223. The ventilation, you recall, I just wanted to leave in there the ventilation, because we did do a $4 million lease purchase program for 61 unit ventilators that's in process. Right after the vote last year, we signed the contract, we defined the scope, and then we had to wait for product, months for product to come in. Products finally arrived, the, the project is underway. We had advertised on, in the Voters Guide and at the deliberative session, and I think our number was around 55 unit ventilators. We were actually able to do 61. The whole project is going to be completed over the course of the year, and it may be more than 61 unit ventilators. We'll tell you what the, the end scope of the, the project's going to, to look like when it's all complete, but it's a heck of a good start to provide fresh air into classrooms that will lower the, the CO2 levels in those rooms, as we talked about. What we did is, we identified rooms that had over 1,000 parts-per-million CO2, because that's a level where people start to get a little bit of, bit groggy. It's not at the level where it can cause sickness or illness or anything like that. But it can affect teaching, it can affect learning, it can affect the student's attention span. Everybody knows when you're, when you're in a stuffy room, in a stuffy environment, you know, one can lose concentration. You know, sometimes I have enough, I had a hard enough time, you know, concentrating in central office, which has natural air coming through the porous windows and walls that blow my blinds all around. So, you know, that, that's something that we have done, and we continue to look at and evaluate over the course of the project and see where else we can perhaps fill in, you know? So that's a continued effort. We do have the paving of O'Garret Drive and a new sidewalk. We had a meeting at the Planning and Building Committee with Steve Keach, our engineer, our civil engineer. Steve was with us for probably a couple of hours during that meeting, giving his usual expertise on what he's planning on, what we're looking at as far as the grand scheme. But everybody seems to agree that O'Garret Drive has reached a point, and it probably reached that point a few years ago, where it's time to pave it. And if we're going to pave it, we're going to put a sidewalk in. The sidewalk currently doesn't go down in front of the skate park, but we recognize the need to do something in that area as far as getting rid of the ponding that occurs. And we, we do have a number for that that isn't incorporated into this. In the future, talking with DPW, Alphax, the highway's going to be widened. And so the bridge going over Babusak Lake Road is going to be redone. When that bridge is done, there's, and this is just thoughts for the future, because this is a master plan, right? This isn't a next-year thing, but this could be two, three, four years down the road when the highway block grant money comes in, or the infrastructure money comes in, or whatever money is coming from Washington comes in. You know, when that road is widened and the bridge is redone, it's 650 feet from the end of that bridge to O'Garret Drive. So the thought was to put a turn lane coming from east, from west to east, headed towards the mobile station, to try and get rid of some of that backup of traffic on Babusak Lake Road that we all know well. on Babusak Lake Road that we all know well and love, you know? And then on the opposite way, to put another kind of turn lane to widen that section of Babusak Lake Road. That's contingent upon, is there enough land, what the design's going to be, there is private property in the way? Or there could be some cutoff road going into O'Garret that went through where the skate park is in that area. So there's a lot of moving parts, and there's going to be options to this. But to get us off the dime, because that's going to be in the future, and that may or may not happen, because it's a lot to happen, we were thinking it'd be best to tackle O'Garret Drive and to do as much of the sidewalk as we can. And then potentially look at doing a sidewalk in front of the skate park to do a connector, depending upon how far off everything else in the plan would be. So that's an option, and that's $552,000. There's a couple of items in here. You remember, you know, last year we had bleacher upgrades, J-Muse APR, bleacher in the Smith Gym, we had a floor for the J-Muse APR, courtesy of the trustees of trust funds. Those are all done without any taxpayers' dollars. It came from the Master Cola Fund. We thank the trustees. The job is completed, looks fantastic. We have one little thing to finish up, and it's, well, it's a little more than just an aesthetic. There's a pad that's where the stage is, and I have to admit, we kind of messed up on the logo on that. So we're going to get that re-redone, so Marsha McGill will start being civil with me again, because she was not happy with that. I'm only joking, and I'm smiling on that. You know, we had a little discussion, and wires got crossed on that one, so we're going to fix that. But that's really cool that the floor is done. It looks absolutely fantastic. It's able to support the cafeteria tables, because it is not a hardwood floor with the wheels of the caf tables grind the dirt into the floor and have a tendency to wreck the floor. So this is something, it's a different material, and it is quite striking, the color scheme. And then we have, you know, the floor for the high school, for Merrimack High School, the gym that's out there a couple of years. That can't be sanded again. It's getting to the point where in 2425, a few years down the road, we need to look at doing a replacement of that. We have boilers out for Merrimack High School and for J-Muse in 2527 and 2829. And then we were doing the window replacement that was passed last year, that you guys encumbered the funds to do, I think, 51 windows on the outside of the high school, where the buses come on the easterly side of the high school. And then a couple of years, you know, forward into the future, we want to do the courtyard side, and then we want to kind of clean up the rest of the high school and do window replacements on that. We left the turf field there as a TBD for 2425. That's something that we discussed a few years ago. We had a petition warrant article by one of the budget committee members that was put on the ballot. It did indeed fail, but that's something that we want to keep in the forefront, because, you know, most high schools of our size have an artificial surface field. It allows for greater usage. It doesn't allow for unlimited usage, but it allows for greater usage. But it is something that every 15 to 16 years, you have to look at doing a replacement of it. You know, you have to take those costs into consideration. It's not going to be a money-saving thing versus a regular grass field, but it is indeed going to allow you to have more utilization of that field when it's there. So we left that in there, and then, you know, the master plan, as I would say, who knows what's going to happen there? We're just beginning because of COVID. That wasn't a good time to address it. And now that we're kind of back, and you can see the way the traffic is again, you know, with the high school kids driving and the high school kids leaving all at once, and the issues that creates for both parent pickups, you know, I'm glad I don't hear many horns blowing out there, because I'll tell you, when it's, when it's in the afternoon and the parents are there to pick up their kids, they're parking and they're jammed in there, however, they all seem to be very gracious as far as moving about and being careful. So that is an issue, and that has to be solved, and hopefully that will be solved with some creative engineering that Steve can do, and work with the Planning and Building Committee, work with the Town Center Committee also, and then work with the Budget Committee and work with the School Board too, to come up with different types of scenarios to address problems that we have in the future with the campus and to give it more of a presence. The building itself is not a bad, Merrimack High School's not a bad-looking building when you just drive up onto it. The problem is right in front of it is acres of asphalt and telephone poles and guardrails all over the place. So it'd be nice to take a look at that in that regard, and to try and soften the entrance of the high school by utilizing some green space. Maybe taking down, the recommendations would be taking down central office, taking down the Blue House, definitely taking down the Red House, and then in the plan, it would be constructing a central office someplace else in that campus, not necessarily where the Red House is or the Blue House or the Green House, but maybe somewheres away from where it is right now in that campus. So that, in a nutshell, is the Capital Improvement Plan for your consideration. And, you know, you'll discuss it over the week. Any questions you have, feel free to email me through the chair if you want to do central questions, or just devise them and feed them to me, and I'll have Tom here next time to get into the nitty-gritties, especially with the roof, because Tom's the man with the roofs, you know? He certainly is. I'm just the messenger. So that's my presentation on the CIP.
Shannon?
Yeah, full disclosure, I emailed Matt just to ask if the skate park parking area was part of the O'Garret Project, because it's basically like, you know, a water feature parts of the year, more than it is, you know, appropriate parking. I know it's being used for not only the skate park, but it's definitely overflow parking for our students, staff when sports are happening along O'Garret Drive. We know that the visitors are parking there. And it's just not ideal. I remember being on Parks and Rec and having this as one of my assigned sites. And literally, I mean, it was, you could fit like a truck in the size of the puddling that was happening. So it's not ideal. This is technically our land, so technically we should be maintaining it. But when I asked Matt what the cost of that would be, if it's not part of that, he said it'd be an additional $92,800. So with that, I think as you're looking at the O'Garret Project, I would consider that as an addition to that project that we should, we should discuss, because I did not, it's not on here. So it'd be an additional $92,000, which would bring year one to $2,245,925. If we decide to do that.
And eventually, I think it's probably, at some future board meeting, some future year, we have to address the location of the existing skate park vis-à-vis the town and a potential relocation of that structure to allow us to have better options of the utilization of that land in that area.
And that actually came up at the last Parks and Rec meeting I attended, to say that when we do do that, it was something we should be doing as a, it'd be a joint communication with the town, a joint effort with the town, and that the Flara family be properly consulted, because I think they got a lot of information secondhand, even through social media. And it was very upsetting to them, because they did a lot to get that skate park established in this community.
Yeah, I think when we finally took ownership in 2018, there was a rumor going around that that was going to go away, and we had to stress that it wasn't going to go away.
Right.
It's not going to leave that area without a suitable, better than what you have, structure that's going to remain to the same dedication.
And to work with the town to make sure that the naming, the naming of the Flara Skate Park stays as it is. So with that, no, so, but I just don't want to open up that we are making a move to do that, just like I made it very clear at our last Parks and Rec meeting, because that was a very emotional topic, that anything that is done, it will be done with a true collaboration with the town, and only to make for better for the community. So that would be the motivating, the moving factor in doing that, so.
Yeah, because quite honestly, you know, well, the town, meaning, you know, myself, Tom Toussot, Paul McCally, the town manager, Kyle Fox, Dawn, the DPW director, all the guys that we know.
MacAsparius is Parks and Rec's wall's been.
Yes, MacAsparius. Jeff Strong, the DPW guy, who's like six foot eight, and he came down to the bottom of our basement to see what was going on, and I think he hit his head around five times on the ductwork down there, so. But yeah, no, we work extremely well, and we're going to, you know, obviously we're going to continue that effort. It's always been there, and anything we do, we're not going to do without them knowing about it, not them being consulted, or not asking for their advice and help. You know, that's the way things get done, and get done in a nice, smooth, kind of cooperative, cohesive fashion. So that's our plan here with this.
For sure. The other thing I wanted to bring up, just because it's kind of good to know that we are in the last two years of any bonded debt we have. So this coming budget year, if the numbers are right, because I know that you refinance a lot to try to get us a better rate, what my old notes had is at $821,500 for this coming year. And 2324 is the last year of bonded debt, and that's paying off our middle school, and that's $790,500.
Yep, correct.
And then things will drop off.
Things will drop off. We did pick up the ventilation projects, around 400 grand, but we lost the high school addition a few years ago, which was like 300, so that was almost a wash. And so we're going to have another $750,000 after the 2324 year.
And again, how long was the lease purchase for that?
For the?
For the lease purchase for the ventilators?
Ventilation, 10, 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't have that on.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to number two in new business, which is the standards-based report card presentation. I'll let you go ahead and introduce.
Yes, so we have a number of staff members here tonight. I'd like to give you a little bit of a background, and I want to thank him for this background information. This work on standards-based reporting and report cards began in 2017 under Dr. Mark McLaughlin, who was then the Assistant Superintendent. He formed a group, a standing committee of teachers, facilitators, administrators. Some of the administrators attended some training and a presentation by Dr. Tom Guske of the University of Kentucky, who was a nationally-known expert on standards-based reporting and the author of Standards-Based Reporting Book of that very name. The committee used Dr. Guske's book as a guide for studying the why and the how of standards-based reporting. And also, student standards based with, in the other systems throughout the country were studied, student standards-based reporting, that is, in other school systems throughout the country, were studied by the group. Now, then, under John Fabrizio, who was the, then became the Assistant Superintendent, the committee developed the standards-based process for presentation to the community. It was somewhat delayed because of the pandemic year, but the subcommittee is here tonight to give you an excellent presentation of the development of standards-based reporting in the Merrimack School District. Michelle, would you like to, when you come up, would you like to present the members of the subcommittee along with yourself? First of all, thank you for the outstanding work that all of you have done, and thank you for being here tonight to provide this presentation.
All right, thank you for having us. I will start by introducing who's with us today, and then we each have different parts, so we're going to move in and out and away from the microphone in order to all be able to have a seat at the table. So I have next to me Nicole, Dr. Nicole Rowe, who is the Assistant Principal at J-Muse. And Nikki started out as Language Arts Coordinator when we started this. There's a number of us who have moved roles since we started the work on the report card. Nicole Frizzetta is a sixth-grade classroom teacher at J-Muse. Anders Benson is a music teacher, one of the music teachers at J-Muse. Deb Walters is a classroom teacher at Thornton Ferry School. Holly LeBelzak is our Language Arts Coordinator at Master Cola, and Michelle Rameen, the principal at Master Cola.
And we are so excited to be with you all tonight. This is a long time coming. As Bill had mentioned, we have been in this process for many years. When I started in the district, this is my 21st year, I was using the report card that we had up until this process came to fruition. So it was very much needed, and a tremendous amount of thought, work, and collaboration went into it. And so I'd like to start off really helping you to understand our process. And words matter, and when we, when we were trying to figure out, what's the best way to present this? We really chose the word evolution, because there so much has happened in education since the old report card had been developed. From my start 21 years ago till about 10 years later, we started to have professional learning teams, and we started to work with standards, and we had tremendous information on what students could do and what they couldn't do yet. The problem with the report card is it didn't quite fit with this information that we started to collect as teachers. We were using a standards-based curriculum. We had information on very specific standards of what kids were able to do, what they weren't able to do yet, and what they were just learning. But yet we were reporting a grade such as reading A or excellent. Well, if you get an A or you have excellent on your report card, you can probably make an assumption that you're doing pretty good, that you have the skills that you need, that you're meeting the standards, but it becomes a lot more murky when you have a B or good or a C and satisfactory. Well, what does that mean to be satisfactory in reading? Or what does it mean to get a C in math? We had all this data, but the only way that we could share this information with parents was to use our comments. Teachers started to say, there's got to be a better way. Parents wanted more information to be able to support their children and to have data that suggested they could do this, this, and this, but not yet this. Educators really pushed for a different format to share with parents. And so they could do this during conferences, and they certainly could do it in their comments, but when it came to the report card, there wasn't that much room. We also wanted students to take ownership over all of this work that they were learning. Kids were able to tell you what standards they were working on. We would post the standards, and we still do today, and we tell the students, today, we're working on this. This is the reason why. This is how you're going to use it in life. Students are armed with this information, yet they weren't as much as a, much part, they weren't as much a part of the process as they could have been. So this leads us to the big question, which is, what do we do next? Which of course is looking at the way that we assess and moving forward, evolving our process. If you'll change the slide? Oh, is it right here? Thanks, Michelle. So you can imagine the enthusiasm of teachers and educators to join this committee, because like I said, they were working with a tool that wasn't giving parents and students the information they felt they could be giving them, and people had ideas, a lot of different ideas. It was a really hot topic when we started this work, continues to be today. And when we invited people and we said, you know, here's this opportunity, people were like, yeah, I'm on it, I'm into it. So if you change this slide, oh no, I'll change the slide. These are our committee members. So we have Language Arts Coordinators, we have Unified Arts Teachers, we have a Behavior- of administrators, K-six educators from all different, like, brand-new people and people that had been in the district. And so we really started to build a team of exceptional educators who could focus on not only their area of special, of expertise, but collaborate and listen with, um, ears wide open, eyes wide open, to hear different ideas from different educators who might not have had the same experiences. So it was an incredibly collaborative process with a lot of learning for everyone. Got it?
So, uh, I have the pleasure of presenting you with our product. So, as long as this link works, this is the Merrimack School District Grade Four Report Card. Now my mic is on. So, once again, I have the privilege of presenting the report card itself to you. Um, hopefully, as long as this link works, we should be okay. I just couldn't find my mouse, how embarrassing. So I'll give you a little bit of time to look at it. And then as we scroll down, we see the other subject areas, starting with reading. Then we go to writing, we have place for comments in each. As we continue to scroll down, going to speaking and listening, once again, comments for each specific area, math. And I know I'm moving very quickly, but these will be available to everybody very soon. Science, once again, comments. Social studies, comments. Uh, characteristics of a successful learner with self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship building, responsible decision-making, once again, comments for all of the following. And finally, my favorite section, UAs, so art, music, physical education, and not listed here, uh, obviously because they don't have it at K through four, but at the fifth and sixth grade level, we're world language as well. Now, um, all of the work that we did here was moved forward by our guiding question, which is, how do we communicate personal growth and academic achievement so that parents and students have an accurate understanding of learning progressions across all educational environments? And this really comes back to the core of what we wanted from this report card, so that it's a communication device between students, parents, and teachers.
So we wanted to show you the report card and the final product, so you can see where we landed. But part of our goal tonight is to share with you the journey that we went on in order to arrive at the report card, as well as be able to walk you through components of the report card. So we hope by starting and showing you that, you'll be able to have the different parts of it as we go through it in mind. So as Anders mentioned, we had our guiding question, and when we first started as a committee, we had to define our purpose, and what was it that the report card in Merrimack would look like? So one of the things, um, we started looking at was, what's the purpose of grading or reporting performance? And so this slide shows some of the research we came across, where Guske asked educators, they pulled a number of educators, to ask them, what was the purpose of grading? Why was it important? What did they use it for? So these are, these are the responses of educators across the country, and they were divided into six areas. So we looked at some of those, and from there, we defined our own purpose, which is on this slide. And we came back to this over and over again throughout our work. When we would get stuck on something, we had to make, if we had to make a decision, we really went back to, what is the purpose of our MSD report card? And so, uh, because it was so driving in our work, I'm going to read it. The purpose of this report card is to communicate with parents, guardians, and students regarding the achievement of specific standard-based learning goals. It identifies students' levels of progress relevant to those goals, areas of strength, and areas where additional time and effort are needed. So this purpose drove every, all of the work that we did and we continue to do.
Hi, I'm Deborah Wilder, I teach fourth grade at Thornton's Ferry. And part of the process that we had when we were beginning work on this was to do some research. And we collected a variety of standard-based report cards from the states listed above, um, different-sized districts. We looked at them for what we thought would work in Merrimack, but also what didn't work for us and how we would like to change it. Um, as Kim mentioned through Dr. Olson, we also did a book study, um, on Tom Masguske's books. Some of us went to a workshop with him in Concord, watched videos, podcasts, whatever we could find where he was speaking. When it came time to do the characteristics of a successful learner and the social emotional portion of the report card, we did research on the Castle Standards, which is widely used, um, for many standard-based report cards. Okay. And then one of the important decisions we had to make was about, how did we want to report the progress to parents? And we've had a variety of things happening in the districts where conferences sometimes were done at the same time as the report card, and so you're really getting the same information. Um, and then we had some times when it would be held before the report card, and so we wanted to be consistent, and we wanted to have information more evenly spaced throughout the year. And so it was determined that it would be best to have conferences, um, in mid-November and then have the report card come out later. This gave parents and students a chance to hear some information and then see if things that could be done at home or in the classroom could make some improvements before they actually received the report card. And that happens, we have conferences in between, um, the first session, the first report card, and then the second report card.
Make sure, yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the difference between the reporting standards and the curriculum standards. So reporting standards are the standards that we list on the report card. That's what, um, you will see there. They provide the basis for communicating meaningful and understandable information about students' achievement and performance in school. They are precise enough to communicate the knowledge and skill students are expected to require, or acquire, excuse me. And they are expressed in parent-friendly language so that parents and students understand exactly what they mean. The curriculum standards are what inform teacher planning around instructional units and classroom assessments. They are frameworks that classify standards for student learning along multiple dimensions, including both content and performance. Those content standards are the specific knowledge and stu- um, knowledge students are expected to acquire from the instruction. The performance standards are what students do with what they learn, so all critical to be shared with parents. On the next slide, we go. Here is an example of a reporting standard, uses a variety of decoding and/or word analysis strategies. This is the first reporting standard you will see on any grade one through six report card under reading. These are the curriculum standards that are aligned or under this reporting standards, and this example is for first grade. And you'll notice that there are both content and performance, um, standards there. So actually, Holly, I'm going to have you leave that up.
Okay.
Um, just while we're here, I'm going to pause for just a minute on the report card and point out the connection between the essential learning competencies. Um, we've talked a lot about those over the last year or so, um, and I just want to make the connection for families so they can see where those essential learning competencies at every grade level came from. And so educators, over the course of last year and then the summer this year, looked through the curriculum standards, and those are all from the college and career readiness standards. They chose the most critical for mastery at each grade level for the success of the student in that grade level. So those are, they, the standards that are here aren't necessarily the essential learning competencies, but for the reporting standard that's listed up there, these were in first grade, these were the standards that were looked at, and then the essentials were chosen for teachers to focus on providing instruction to mastery for all students. Those e- essential learning competencies are, are standards either, um, as they stand or they were combined, but the progress on those will be reported on, under the reporting standards that are on the report card. Um, so this is, the essential learning competencies aren't called out on the report card, however, progress on them at the K to six level will be reported on the report card underneath the reporting standard. And we'll have documents to show you how, show parents how those are aligned.
Do you see it? There we go. All right. Okay. Um, I'm Jeanette Cody, the language arts coordinator at Reed's Ferry. So, uh, I'm just going to take you back to the process that we went through, uh, the committee, that the committee went through in determining the reporting standards versus the, uh, curriculum standards. So the, the report card essentially was designed so that all reporting standards were the same in grades one through six. Kindergarten actually has, um, slightly different reporting standards just because of the nature of kindergarten. Um, so reporting standards, all the same in grades one through six. However, as Holly and Michelle talked about, the curriculum standards are the guide that teachers use in order to, um, instruct their students. So, once we determined those reporting standards, then the committee, we broke up into grade level groups, um, went through each, every single curriculum standard and ensured that they were all aligned under the correct reporting standard. So it was kind of a back-and-forth process, it, it took a long time. Um, so, and, and that was completed in every single subject. We did it for reading, we did it for writing, for speaking and listening, math, science, social studies, UA, and then, uh, and then another subcommittee did the same for the characteristics of a successful learner. So that was, um, one of our, our biggest pieces in the process. Um, so the supporting documents, this was another, um, big chunk of time that committee members spent, uh, working on this, was creating our supporting documents. So when it comes time for report cards, parents will receive, uh, the guide to the, a, a general guide, that's for the Merrimack School District K to six, um, trimester report card. And then families will also receive, uh, a family guide for their grade-level-specific, um, report card, so whate- whichever grade their, their children are in. Um, teachers also have their own guide, so, so there was two separate guides created tailored to two different, uh, two different audiences. Um, there's also a family guide for the characteristics of a successful learner. So there's a lot of documentation that goes home for families to be able to explain, um, what their report card looks like and how, and how to read it, how to determine or look at the information that they're receiving. So Holly, if you can click. So we just want to show you what, uh, a family guide looks like. So this is an example for, uh, an end-of-grade-four family guide, and... So if you're looking at, this is a, a, again, an end-of-grade, or a grade-four family guide. So if you, a parent has a, a child in fourth grade, this is, uh, the bold is the reporting standard, and the bullets are, um, language that we took from the curriculum standards to make it, um, to make it familiar for families. And those are end-of-grade-four. So this, those are all of the standards that, that, uh, that children in fourth grade will learn for each of those reporting standards. And there's math and science. So it's a, it's a, it's a valuable document that, um, families can have and keep, um, so that they know exactly what their kids are learning in all subject areas. So I'm going to, can you hear me? Okay. So I'm going to talk about performance indicators. One of the things that we had to decide was, how were we going to share this information rather than an A, B, or an excellent, or a good? How are we going to share this information with parents? So we, after much discussion and debate, we went with beginning, developing, and meeting. Um, we, one of the key things to remember with this is that because we're on trimesters, we're assessing students as far as where they're at with this curriculum standard until the end of the trimester. Because for each trimester, the curriculum standards will change. So a student who might get a meeting in, um, you know, decoding words in first trimester might be a developing in that same standard for the second trimester, depending on what exactly is being covered in the classroom. Um, the other piece to this is that we changed how we do comments. So instead of having one lengthier comment at the end, we tried to have different comments for each subject area. Uh, these comments are not intended to be lengthy, they're supposed to be just one or two sentences as needed to kind of show student, um, growth or where they might need to go next and to help set goals. Um, I think I'm ready to go to the next one. And then that kind of leads us up to, what are our next steps? So unfortunately, COVID got in the way with some of what we were working on. We had just started making grade-level rubrics to help us with our assessments, um, and key indicators for each subject area along the way, so that we were kind of all on the same path with everything. Um, so we were hoping to get back to that. We also had intended to get feedback from everyone involved, educators, um, parents, students, and see how it was going. We were hoping that this could be a fluid document and that we can make adjustments as needed when we were going through. Another area that we want to move forward with is, um, using Canvas, um, as a communication tool, so that we can provide feedback for parents, um, throughout the trimester by using those tools that we already have, um, instead of, a lot of them work on like the, uh, percentage grades. Uh, additionally, one other thing that we were talking about that's not up there is having students take more ownership over their learning, working on goal-setting. I know a lot of teachers in my building at the upper elementary are using evidence binders this year, and having students take pieces of their own work to show as evidence for conferences or to help with report cards. So we're hoping that kids can have more ownership over what they're doing and kind of see the progress that they're making in a school year. And that is the end, so thank you very much, and any questions?
Lori.
Um, so, so thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm very familiar with, um, Tom Guske's work and... And I think your presentation is innovative, progressive, research-based. Learning is not a race. And so this actually extends the timeline. It actually gives kids more time to, you know, to grow on the quarterly system. But I think it's critical, and I said this last year, that, you know, the, the report card is really the summative, but the formative is every single day. And if we see that gap getting bigger, you know, that communication piece, which I know you all do, is just so critical. So, um, so thank you and a nice job.
Any other comments? Jenna.
So first of all, bravo. I don't know, there's no good way to say this. I hated the other report cards. I didn't think they were helpful. I would look at them and be like, okay, I didn't learn anything, really. Like the comments, really, were the best part because, you know, but also they were sometimes so long. You're like, what's cut and pasted here? What's about my child? I, I don't, and I understand why. I'm a teacher. I get it. So this is just a huge improvement. And all your time, effort, and energy is so appreciated. I'm actually kind of thrilled. I have a kid who's still in elementary school. So I will get to see this, you know, come out. And I just really, really appreciate it. The one thing that jumped out, well, a couple of things jumped out to me. First of all, the goal setting and evidence binders for ownership of learning, huge, huge. My daughter went to a charter school just last year, pandemic year, and her teacher did a lot of that. And I, she just, she just flo- just absolutely flourished in that environment, being given a goal. And then she was super motivated to meet it, and she would create her own goals and meet with her teacher. It was huge. And the evidence binders, anything that you can do, you know, to increase that intrinsic motivation, have kids take ownership of their learning, it's just huge. So I think that's a huge piece. On slide number eight, and I don't know how, this, it goes back to the mission statement. I don't have a copy of it, so I have to open it on my phone because I took a picture of it in the electronic version. But it says, what is, what is the purpose of the Merrimack School District report card? This is just one piece of feedback that I had. In reading it, the last line says, relevant to those goals, areas of strengths, and areas where additional time and effort are needed. Effort there could be referred to probably open-endedly for the child or for the stu- for the teacher. However, assessment of effort gets a little messy, right? Because effort for all kids looks very, very different. And it, the, the idea of more effort is needed gives the implication that kids don't try. And you know, Ross Green has this great quote, which I just wrote down. Children do well when they can. And you guys are not unfamiliar with that. I know you're not. So to whatever degree this is continuing to be used, I would love to see that reworded to, to, when I wrote it here, I've lost it. Oh, additional support is needed. Areas where additional time and support are needed. Because again, kids do well when they can. And if we can give them the support that they need, you know, sometimes it's not that the kid isn't putting in effort. Sometimes it's the kid is putting in so much effort just to hold it together, they can't meet the standard. And so where additional time and support are needed, to whatever degree this goes forward, that's just my little piece of feedback. But excellent work. That report card is so much better than previous and is going to be so useful in helping parents become actual partners in education as opposed to receivers of, you know, education, which is, I think, the goal. So thank you.
Shannon.
A couple of things. I know Canvas was, after my kids' time, I, my one had it for her senior year, and that was not what, where the majority of her work was being done. So I didn't get to use Canvas a lot, not familiar with it whatsoever. So I'm not, I'm, you know, but using it as a communication tool. I think, you know, as I was raising my kids, and something I always said to the teachers for parent teacher conference, so this is not a shock and awe moment. You know, and I think that, you know, this, that's going to be a big part of it. I, I like the fact that report cards, just the way you're designing things. And again, I think your earlier slide about conferences being that touch point to kind of redirect, reset, and refocus. That pattern of things will be imperative because I think all a report card should be is for the file cabinet, for a student record, and that's it. It should not be where you measure progress because that's something that should happen every day in school. And I think that that's where, you know, Canvas comes in, those communications come in. You know, having, I think, line of sight. And as long as everything's done in a timely and, you know, current fashion, there's never shock and awe. I think that's, you know, as long as those tools are able to be used and easy to be used. Because I know Canvas is new to you as well. I can only imagine the, the learning curve on that. But, you know, having it be only like kind of the snapshot of what you've been working on all of that time. But, you know, with the communication tools that we have now, it's just something for the file cabinet and not something to really tell you where you're at. I think that's something that, you know, from my, from the time that my kids were younger, it, it, it had some shock and awe to it because of the way the tools weren't there. They just weren't. It's not that they, the teachers didn't put in the effort, but the tools weren't there to kind of go back and forth other than basic email. So having those, those, as long as they're done in a timely fashion, the, the data of what they're working on, how that work is doing, again, the standards, where they, where it falls into those areas and, and how they're measuring up to that is so important. Because as we're catching up these students this year, and we know we are, the world is. It's not our, our kids, the world's kids are doing that. That we can keep this type of work and momentum to do that. This structure is going to be imperative and to make that success for these kids going forward. So the work you did, you didn't even know how important it was going to be when you sat down at your first committee meeting. But it is really taking on what is needed to get us back to where we are, where we need to go, and get them, you know, where they want to be. And again, college career readiness standards being, you know, utilized along the way. Those haven't changed even though the world did. So, you know, kudos to you for doing that work. But, you know, from a parent's perspective, you know, this is exactly, I think, what the dream is for a parent so they can be that proper partner in, in, in education without having to feel like, you know, that extra student in your classroom because of the back and forth on email, which can be just like, I'm sure, I was probably that natty parent that was just buzzing around your head in email. But, uh, but this is exactly what's needed so we can keep the progress going for each and every child. So great work. Thank you for doing it. Thank you for the years of work it took to get here. A little extra because of the COVID, but, uh, but definitely timely and, and, and relevant to what we're doing now. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm going to echo what everyone said. It's abundantly clear that you've put a tremendous amount of work and brain power, you know, into this work and presentation tonight. And, you know, as Shannon said, years, you know, and it's very evident that you did thorough work and you really worked through and presented an amazing product. And certainly, we thank you for your time here tonight, too. It's not always someone to stay here till nine o'clock at night. But certainly, we appreciate the company and we appreciate all the work that you do, not only tonight and with this effort, but each and every day. So thank you for joining us.
I think we can move on to the next item, which is the preliminary information on residential development.
Yes, this is a, a work in progress. In fact, just today, I received the number of bedrooms for the respective projects from Casey Wolf, the assistant planner in town. I want to thank Casey for sending me the information. So now I'll go back to work with, with Matt. We'll sign the number of bedroom units because that's, that's really the important piece of information that was missing in, in this, this information that I presented to you. But I wanted to present you what we're going to talk about through the budget process in upcoming years in terms of the impact of development, which is extraordinary in, in Merrimack right, right now and has been for the last several years on, on enrollments. As of the present time, either units already constructed, under-constru- under-construction, excuse me, or in the planning phase, there are 1,392 total units. So now we will go back and assign the number of bedrooms, use the ratios that are sometimes used in demographic analysis to estimate the enrollment impact by district. So we have an idea that, and so that there are no surprises in the future in terms of capacity of the building and future enrollments in each respective building.
Okay. Any questions? Shannon.
I know, actually, I was not at that meeting. It was a time I was stuck in California for, for work. But we were getting that kind of update on a regular basis from our community development, like every couple of years. Obviously, we're in a bit of a more intensive building period now. But the one thing he always had at the, at the ready was the potential student impact. So I think that data that, that you're compiling may already be being done from community development. So where, with this data, are you getting it from the chamber? Are you getting it from community development?
I'm getting this from the town, from the.
Tim Thompson, right? Thompson?
From Tim Thompson, yes.
So does, did he not have projected students based on the demographic and type of dwellings that were coming in? Or, because he gave those to us in prior presentations.
Well, I have not received that from Tim. The only thing I received, and not as a criticism at all, certainly, was the developments in the planning office and now the number of bedrooms. So I'll make contact with, with Casey and with Tim to see if he has something more, more formal.
As I said, because we've gotten that a few times from him. So it's just work that might be being done twice, that's all. But this is great information. We definitely need this as we go into budgets.
And we can certainly add that to our future meeting.
Yes.
You know, the update and the request. Sure. Any other questions, comments? Okay. The next one is the memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the school board and the Merrimack Teachers Association classroom coverage.
Shannon, is there something that you want to?
So as you might be aware, we are in negotiations with the teachers' union. And so with that, discussions came that we felt that couldn't, they're, they're truly relevant to current operations and the crisis we have with classroom coverage. We didn't feel this is something that should wait till July 1st. And based on that, we requested that the board consider sidebar agreement, or as we're calling it memorandum of agreement, to amend the current contract. So this will go into effect once executed and that'd be part of the renewed contracts. We actually would no longer be negotiating this issue. So what this does is realizing that we have a crisis in substitutes and a crisis in finding even full-time classroom teachers for some of our subject areas that have always been a struggle, but now are a more critical struggle, to have funding that allows us to cover classrooms. Basically, they will get a stipend for, for per diem for those days that they're taking on those additional students. And the benefit of this is where students might have been getting a substitute or even sent for a study hall, which happened quite often, especially I think at the high school level where, where they're more prevalent, study halls it is. But this offers them actual instruction from a certified teacher, and there's a benefit to all for doing that. So I don't know if you want to read through it so that way it's part of public record. But I can do that. So the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Teachers Association, MTA, hereby agree to amend the master agreement by adding the following provision effective immediately. Eight dot seven. A middle or high school teacher, grade seven through 12, who agrees to teach an extra academic class at the request of administration or their designee during their planning period will be paid an additional $40 per period. No teacher will be required to accept such an assignment. No more than one additional class per day will be assigned to a teacher. An elementary, in parentheses, preschool through grade six teacher who covers part of another class at the request of administration or their designee for more than half a day will be paid an additional $60. If the teacher covers part of another class at the request of administration or their designee for less than half a day, the teacher will be paid an additional $40. In all cases, the administrator or the designee will be responsible for assigning students. And then there'd be a signature from us and the president of the MTA.
So I'll open it up to discussion first? Or if there's no discussion, just a motion that would authorize me to be able to sign that?
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement as stated.
Do I have a second? Second by Jenna. Any further conversation? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that's four zero zero.
All right, thank you.
I have new business.
Okay, and, um, yep, new, and then other new business.
So I have a, a couple of things under new business. The first thing I would like the school board to consider is forming a task force. We've had a lot of people come to meetings. We've had a lot of public participation. In 2020, there were, at state level, there were over 400 bills in states looking to create or re-establish educational stack, task force. So I think the Merrimack School Board could engage our community members to help us build a consensus and support for solutions and our most pressing educational issues. Some ideas that the task force could work on, and of course, the, the school board could work on this, is, you know, supporting the upcoming contracts, recruiting the best teachers, workforce development, having a career day or take a student to work day, studying trends of high school dropouts locally, nationally, and talking about solutions, looking at how we can close achievement gaps. The master plan committee could work with the building and planning committee to be a part of those presentations and also be the parents giving feedback so they're on the first line of what we're trying to do. Again, the youth at risk survey is going to be given again this year. We, Bill presented it last meeting. But, you know, we could get parents together to look at trends, look at the last survey, look at this survey. We used to have project safeguard. A lot of parents were involved in that. But what can we do as a community to support our kids, especially our most at-risk kids? We could have a committee to look at the leadership profile when we're going to be hiring new administrators for our school. Or just parents giving us feedback on, you know, things that they want us to start working on. We, a lot of times talk about, you know, a lot of the good things, but where, where are we not looking? Or where are we failing? Or, you know, how are we not meeting everyone's needs? So I would really like us to consider doing something with our community.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? All right. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion to approve the October 18th, 2021 minutes. Made by Shannon. Second by Jenna. Any, any edits, corrections, or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's four zero zero. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 1st, 2021 minutes, made by Lori Rothaus, second by Shannon. Any edits, corrections, comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero, opposed zero. And then next, I'll entertain a motion for the November 9th, 2021 minutes, made by Shannon, second by Lori. Any comments, edits, additions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's four zero zero. And now to the consent agenda.
I'll be taking care of this item. We have one educator resignation, seventh grade teacher at Merrimack Middle School, Ashley Parker.
I'll, a motion to, for the consent agenda?
Moved as presented.
Okay, made by Shannon, second by Lori. All those in favor signify by saying aye. That carries four zero zero. Okay, now moving on to other, the committee reports. Any committee reports? Lori?
Matt did my committee report, but building and planning committee met. Bill and Matt were there to wee hours in the morning. I think the committee was very excited to get back together. And, you know, what Matt said earlier, Steve Keach is working on a master plan that we can roll out in layers, which I think will be really exciting for our community.
Any other committee reports? Okay, correspondence. I do not believe that I had any when I went back and checked for all of us except for. any when I went back and checked for all of us, except for today, there was one and Bill had responded. Any other that I might have missed or anything that you might have received other than the public comment ones? Okay, all right. And then, any comments? None? And now, we are to the public comments on agenda items section. I will open it up just as I did before to anyone that's out here in the audience, if they'd like to speak. And we'll transition to Shannon in between.
Hi, Heather Robitaille, Springfield Circle. Just, I would like to also say thank you to the group that was here that presented the report cards and the improvement on that. I echo all your comments on, from a parent's standpoint, I want to be a partner in my child's learning and being able to see the competencies and see specific communication and tailored growth throughout their journey through school. I think will make a big difference and certainly help us hold up our end in the education partnership between teachers and their relationship with our children and what we can do to support them. I'd also just like to ask the board not delay planning that emergency meeting to discuss masks. I hate that we have to keep talking about it, but every day that we delay, more children are getting sick. And for some of these children, this could be a significant event. So, I appreciate you talking about it. I appreciate the desire for the transparency, but I ask that you act quickly. Thank you.
Shannon?
I have an email, and some of them are from earlier where we got the addresses back. So, Joanne Principay from 21 Beacon Drive. I believe it is high time Merrimack, that Merrimack joins Nashua and Manchester in mandating masks in classrooms. My granddaughter in first grade tested positive last week. It is now seven days later, and she is still running a fever and has been put on steroids and is still having breathing issues. She suffers from severe asthma and has been hospitalized with pneumonia three times in her young life. Last Monday, I got her off the bus, and she told me that all three kids at her desk cluster were not wearing masks. There was an identified positive COVID case from her classroom from the end of the week before. She goes to MES. Also now, her sister, while still testing negative, has to be out of school until November 29th. During this time, they, while they are both on IEPs, they are not getting Zoom instruction and not getting services. Manchester is currently Zooming for quarantined kids. We are failing our children. With the current high of 125 reported cases in town and the state all-time high positivity rate of 8.4%, I implore you to make a decision to protect the children in our town. Joanne Principay.
Okay, next at the mic, Mr. Moore?
Chuck Moore, Ford Depot Street. I've heard so much this evening. I could easily stand at the microphone for an hour and further illuminate the community on the feverish needs of this school district that appear to be generating no smoke. I expect there'll be fuller deliberations on the budget committee. I hope that members of the school board will attend the budget committee meetings and perhaps give us a less cryptic understanding of what the vision is for the school district budget. I will limit any further remarks to endorsing Mrs. Rothaus's recommendation for a task force. Frankly, I'm a little surprised there wasn't any discussion relative to the suggestion. But nevertheless, I think it's a particularly brilliant move considering our times. I think perhaps what we need truly is a blue ribbon task force in this community. And I stress that it'd be a blue ribbon task force. There is a war on education, and there has been for the last 40 years. And it seems to have caught up with us to the point where we're willing to abandon any resistance to it. You want to level fund the budget. And yet, I heard nothing but financial needs to satisfy the ideas and the visions and the expectations of the school board. It's going to require money, and money becomes less and less available to us, particularly when we don't even advocate for ourselves. That's, I guess, my job on the budget committee. And so, perhaps, perhaps I'll leave it at that tonight. But, I'm disappointed that we don't have a more robust push for financing the things that we need in a timely fashion. I don't have another life to live to wait for the things that should have been done 10 years ago. And I refuse to kick the can down the road, hoping that maybe in five years, they'll be different. The time is now. If not us, who? It's our responsibility to the community. And I don't think that we're really matching up to the work. Again, I apologize for being a little tired. It's late the evening. Too much has transpired. I hope you consider my remarks seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Next is from Jennifer Spillane of Craig Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board members, I want to say that I'm shocked about the number of COVID cases in Merrimack schools right now, but I cannot. Many of us saw this coming. The sharp sudden rise in COVID infections in our schools shows that masks should no longer be optional. My son attends a charter school in Nashua with well over 500 students, and they've had two cases of COVID since school started the final week of August, and neither of those cases of COVID were contracted at school. The school is doing so well because all students and staff are wearing masks. It's been scientifically proven over and over that when everyone wears masks, they work. My son may not attend our schools at the moment, but we've lived in Merrimack for over 20 years, and I care about the people in this community. We need to stop listening to the few who don't want their children to have to wear masks and start listening to what science and the experience of other schools tells us that masks work. Sincerely, Jennifer Spillane.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. I'll keep it quick. This is getting late, but just want to emphasize how much I definitely agreed with the budget, the items mentioned by Lori and Jenna regarding teachers, hearing the critical shortage, whatever we can do to retain and attract staff, seems critical at this point and essential. And then also the emotional wellness component, again, so I think that's top-notch. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Shannon?
Next is Christina Livery, and I, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong, and she's at 11 Parkhurst Road. Good day. Unfortunately, I will not be able to make the school board meeting tonight, but I have strong feelings I wish to share. As a mother and nurse, I am very disturbed by the current opt-out rule for classrooms. Masks help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Wearing a mask provides little protection to the wearer, but is instead intended to stop the wearer from spreading the virus. The adage goes, "I wear my mask to protect you. You wear your mask to protect me." The families who have opted out of mask wearing are, in my experience, the same families who do not vaccinate for COVID and do not adhere to social distance and guidelines. These children are more likely to contract COVID in the community and pass it on in the schools. New Hampshire is experiencing an increase in numbers. Our current daily infection rates, hospitalizations, and patients' intubated rates are as high or higher than they were at the worst point in this pandemic. Our emergency rooms, ICU, and floor bed capacity has been reached. Our healthcare workers are tired and burnt out. Just recently, Elliott Hospital had to divert no ambulances or admit because they were well past full. Parkland has more than a dozen patients boarding in their emergency department. CMC is not faring any better. The situation affects not only people needing to be seen for COVID, but traumas, illnesses, et cetera. We all need to do our part. No one likes wearing a mask, but we do it, but we do because it is for the greater good. Please remove the mask opt-out option in Merrimack schools. Kindest regards, Christina Livery, BSN RN.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none. Shannon, do we have any others?
Three.
Okay, I'll just let you.
Thanks, I'm just going to go with it. Catherine Burt, 40 Burt Street. Good evening. I'm writing this email to voice my concern as both a parent and educator as to your mask guidelines. As of November 10th, 21, 196 students slash staff of the Merrimack School District had to be quarantined, as found on your website. The rate of children testing positive for COVID with COVID-19 is on the rise, and vaccinations for the five to 11-year-old group has just started. I'm very disappointed with how this board has handled this pandemic during the school year. I feel like you succumb to the loudest voices against a mask mandate instead of relying on doctors and New Hampshire Board of Education's recommendations. How can I, as a parent, protect my children when they're at school? I thought the board's best interest would be that of the students and their safety. Were the numbers of quarantined students lower last year when there was a mask mandate? I work in a district with a mandate, and we have only had one positive case in the last three weeks. It definitely makes me think that the board needs some new voices that will protect the health and safety of our children. Respectfully yours, Catherine Nichols. Came through as Burt, but happens. Next is Angelique Lipman from AL Court, and she wrote back in the meeting. During this meeting, I received an email from the RFS principal notifying me that my son was in close contact with COVID infection. I'm doing my part to keep my child in school, and I'm disappointed that you are not. Please vote to remove the opt-out until our cases start decreasing. And finally, Rosemarie Rung, 21 Ministerial Drive. I share the concern about the rising cases of COVID, especially in context with much larger school districts who have a mask mandate and far fewer cases. I fully support removing the opt-out as long as our numbers are trending upward. It is disappointing that the board did not use current data to respond to the situation tonight or through an emergency meeting. By not making a decision tonight or in the next few days, more children will get sick, miss school, and spread the virus to others. I don't understand why you find this more acceptable than calling an emergency meeting. Also, I strongly support Mr. Olson's comment about having a vaccine clinic in Merrimack to make it easier for more Merrimack parents to get their children vaccinated. As far as the new report cards, please edit to remove jargon or words that are not in the common lexicon, for example, automaticity. Thank you, Rosemarie Rung.
Okay, I think we're all set. We do have some unfinished business from non-public earlier, so we need to go back into non-public session. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to go back into non-public per RSA 91-a colon three, Roman numeral number two, A, B, and C, made by Shannon, second by Jenna. Jenna, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Lori?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night.